Hey, we're about to open up the Pittsfield Annual School and Town Meeting. And on arrival, you should have checked in with Sarah for that. And if you have not done that, please do so at this time. You'll be checked out on the voter's checklist and will be given a package of ballots. And detract your ballots because you will not get another set. And then if a paper ballot is called for, you'll be instructed what color to use. And then there will be a ballot box up front here. And the voters will move single files around this way, so you might have to move your camera. Come this way, deposit your ballots into the ballot box. Once the balloting is all done, the Board of Supervisors will come forward and count the ballots. Does anyone have any questions? And then when we're done, please to hold any unused ballots in the box of the table they checked in. Now, last night, we did open up the annual town and school district meeting. A motion was made to second that we postpone the meeting until tonight because of conflicts of the general election. We certainly appreciate everybody's understanding in this and appreciate you coming out tonight to attend this meeting. I ask everybody to please silence their cell phone. It'll be greatly appreciated. And if everybody would please stand up and remove your hats and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance of the Pride of the Country. In the Pledge of Allegiance of the Pride of the United States of America, and as a good republic, for which it stands, from a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's go over a few rules. We're going to conduct this meeting with civility, respect, one another. Now, after this meeting, we are all still friends and members of this community, and we should act as such. And please note the arbitrary remarks and keep any sarcasm and disrespectful remarks to yourself. I mean, it is okay to disagree, but let's not be disagreeable. And you must be recognized by the moderator before you can speak. And when you are so recognized, if it's possible, if you could stand and think your name, it would be very much appreciated. And yes, we already went over the balloting, so I think we're ready to roll, right? So we're gonna do it. We're gonna start right off with the school district meeting, which can be found on page 59 of your town report. So I'm gonna do my best to conduct this meeting. If I'm doing something wrong or something's not right, just please let me know. Let me know. Pittsfield School District Meeting. Article 1. To elect a moderator for the ensuing year, we need a motion to accept this article. Move by Charlie, seconded by Terry. All in favor, say aye. Do you have any nominations for nominee George W. Now, there any other nominations? Are there any nominations?
All nominations reported.
Motion's been made, seconded that the nomination from under any calls for George W. All in favor? Article 2. To hear and ask upon the auditor's report, we have a motion to accept this article. Move by Sarah Caliber, seconded by Charlie Pizzo. Is there any discussion? The auditor's report can be found on the inside cover of the town report. Motion's been made to move to accept this. Seconded by Terry Bailey. All in favor, say aye. Article 3. To see if the Pittsfield School District will vote to pay taxes in the same manner as the town. Someone want to make a motion to accept this article? Terry, seconded by Terry. Jerry, Terry. Is there any discussion? Someone want to make a motion? A motion to make that closes, seconded?
Who made the motion?
Move by Sue Worley. All in favor, say aye. Article 4. To hear reports of the school director. Someone make a motion to accept this article? Charlie Pizzo, seconded by Terry Bailey. If there any discussion, the school director's report can be found on page 68 of your town report. It's like a jury council here. No questions or concerns? Motion's been made.
By whom, I'm sorry? Oh, sorry.
Seconded by who? Motion's been made, it's seconded to accept this report. All in favor, say aye. Article 5. Shall the voters of the Pittsfield School District approve a total budget in the amount of $1,144,825 for the 2020-21 school year. It is estimated that this proposed budget will result in education spending of $17,185 per equalized pupil. This projected spending is seven tenths percent higher than spending for the current year. Someone want to make a motion to accept this article? Charlie Pizzo, someone want to second it? Is there any discussion?
Notice that the budget is missing from the town report, that's why we're passing it out. I printed off the copies, I had no idea.
It's okay, I'm just furiously trying to keep up with two motions and two seconds.
We'll wait till the president passes it through.
Last one, go it, go it!
The guy who makes the email?
Terry, Terry Bailey had a question?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, standing at the second desk. Your people are not allowed to do the 25%. As good as that amount of money, he was saying increase their property tax. Can you explain what happened there?
Yep. The last year, you may recall, we had a large budget surplus. It was $188,000 that pushed down by a lot the amount we needed to raise in taxes. So last year, our tax rate, and I, we discussed this at town meeting, if anybody recalls, but our tax rate was lower because we had a surplus that we could pay, that we could use to pay the bills. This year, we have a surplus of $75,000. Tuitions continue to increase. Special education costs have increased a little bit, and that's why it nets out to this difference.
Yeah, that perhaps, that could cause a 25% increase in first student costs. Well, that increase in first student costs from last year to this year, came like a lot more of a surplus than it came down last year.
Well, we had... As I, as I said, we had a hundred, we had $188,000 surplus. So that's about 10% of our budget. And this year, we only had, so, or no, excuse me, that's about 20% of our budget that was covered by us, by money you'd already given us. You know, already, you, the town had already paid to the school district in taxes. And we had, you know, over years from leaving the old supervisory union and also decline in students. We had this extra money, you know, about 20% of our total budget that was allowed to be bought down. And this year, we don't have that much to buy down. And that's where most of it is.
About $100,000 less this year.
Right.
In surplus.
Right. And then for the 50 students we have, we have about a $500 per child increase in tuition. So that's, whatever that is, no, that's $25,000. So that's, and then we had an increase in special education costs. So that's where that's happened.
Terry, Terry, has a question?
Does this have something to do with the Hayschool?
Absolutely not. We are separate from the Windsor, we're still separate from the Windsor Central Modified Union Unified District. I had to remember all the U's. We're still separate from that. We pay tuition to their schools, but we're not involved in the bond for the new build or any of the stuff that's going on there now, other than that we pay tuition to those towns.
Any other questions or comments? Will anyone make a motion and discuss in a piece when we accept this article? No?
Motion to accept.
Fair enough. Anyone make a motion to accept? Can I for seconded? All in favor of accepting Article 5, say aye.
Thank you. We'll try to find another surplus next year.
Article 6. To elect a school director for a three-year term. Someone want to make a motion to accept this article? Charlie, seconded by Erica. Ray Rice's term is up.
There you go.
We need someone for a three-year term. Is there any nominations?
Nominate Ray Rice.
Nomination to make, seconded for Ray Rice. Is there any other nominations? A motion's been made.
Who made the motion?
Jennifer.
All nominations reported, we'll vote for y'all.
All in favor of Ray Rice, say aye. Thank you all very much. Hello, everyone.
If I can make a comment, in, in one way that we are connected, we still, because we send so many children to Windsor Central Schools, we do attend their meetings, their board meetings. Ray fearlessly does that twice a month, for hours at a time. It's, it's a lot. It's a lot. And we owe him a big debt, so again.
Thank you. Article 7. To do any other proper and necessary business. Someone want to make a motion to accept this article? So we'll, Sarah, seconded by Terry. Is there any other proper and necessary business that someone want to bring forward? Pardon me? We don't have any. We just got a beep level. So, Terry, none?
I'm moved, we're forming a vote.
Motion's been made to close the school board meetings, seconded by Sue Worley. All in favor, say aye. So voted. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All you do for the town, you're sacred.
Our meetings are friendly and short. All are welcome. Second Tuesday.
Okay, now we can now resume the annual town meeting. We'll start on page 10 of your town report, which is the agenda. Article 1, to elect a moderator for the ensuing year. Nominee George W. Someone want to make a motion to second the article? Right, seconded by Herb. All in favor? Other nominations? All nominee Jennifer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for George W. Now, there any other nominations?
Moved closer.
All nominations reported.
All in favor, say aye. Article 2, we already did, which was the school district meeting. Article 3. To receive the reports of the town officers for the year 2019. Someone want to make a motion to accept this article? Motion made by Greg, seconded by Donovan, passed. Is there any discussion on the county reports? They're there on page 3 of your county reports, or wait, it's page 11. Anybody have any questions or comments on any of those reports? Want to do your thing?
Yes, I did.
Move the clothes and your drawers.
Someone want to second that? Motion's been made, seconded, that the motion's... Seconded closes and accept the article 4. All in favor, say aye. That was Article 3, I'm sorry, I said 4, 3. Article 4. To elect the following officers as required by law, for the terms indicated, and fulfill any other office vacant. Someone want to make a motion to accept this article? Motion made by Terry, seconded by Erica. And the list of elected officers can be found on page 8 of your town report. We'll start off with a select person for three years. Charlie Pizzo's term is up, so we need a nomination for a select person for three years. Terry, nominate Charles Pizzo. Nomination's been made for, that's seconded for Charles Pizzo. Are there any other nominations? I nominate Joyce Stevens. Nominations been made for Joyce Stevens? Seconded by Amy Hawley. Are there any other nominations for a select person for three years?
All nominations reported.
Motion's been made, that the nomination be closed. Seconded by Patty Haskins. What was that?
I want to ask questions too.
Yeah.
Can I have any questions?
Before we proceed with the vote, Charlie's up there, I think. Do you want to just stand up and be recognized? Thank you. And Joyce, is she here?
Of course she is.
Oh, please stand up. You have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. I know that Charlie and Trish were working on the FEMA stuff, and I just wondered where that is and what the... Where that would be if...
George, if you're gonna stand up, please, we can't go over there.
Patty Haskins, I just wonder where we are with the FEMA stuff. I know Charlie and Trish are working on that together. Where we are, where, how that would proceed, if we have a change in the schedule.
I can tell you where we are. Most of the FEMA work is in what they call a waiting period now. It's waiting to be signed off. I think we've signed off on four projects that are completed and we're, and they're, it's in the terms to be reimbursed. Like I said, most of the projects are done. There are four outstanding projects that have to be addressed this coming season, construction season, and that would be Park Place, Tweed River Drive, and the cemetery, as well as the removal of the temporary repair and then the permanent repair at the far end of Upper Michigan near Mannings. The approval for the, the permanent repair at Upper Michigan is gone through. We have received two grants to do the cemetery and park, the cemetery and Park Place. And we've also are in the process for getting a grant for Tweed River Drive. So there's still work to be done. You know, George is gonna have a lot of work to do at Upper Michigan, because that's a significant repair that's gonna be done. There's still a significant amount of work to be done as far as signing off and moving all the projects forward from the, I guess you could call it, almost completion phase to being completed. You know, I put a lot of hours in this year. I, I tried to get the town reimbursed for those hours, and that ended up not happening. I don't know, you know, I put 400, over 400 hours in with FEMA. I would say there's probably at least half of that coming up for whoever is going to, going to take the, the seat. And they're gonna have to dedicate a lot of time to it. It's not an easy task, and it's not a task that is very straightforward. So that's where we're, that's where we're at. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to say before we pass their ballots? At this time, we'll use the blue ballot. Charlie, Charles Pizzo for Joyce Stevens on this. And when you have it done, we'll come around this way, single file, come up front, we'll send them into the ballot box.
It's because I stood up to the flag.
All the meetings act according. Sorry about the confusion up here. We'll try something a little different next time. I mean, created a grid block. I'm not sure what we're gonna do. We'll do something different.
I'm like church. I'll go down there.
She had blocks of them.
So we had a valid vote. Joyce Stevens had 67, Charlie Pizzo had 42.
Congratulations, Joyce.
Thank you, Charlie, for your service for three years.
It's been my pleasure, and congratulations, Joyce.
Okay, next is Lister for three years. Elizabeth Warner, someone, we're gonna get a new here. Elizabeth Lister for three years. Elizabeth Warner's term is up. Are there any nominations for Lister for three years? Herb.
I nominate Elizabeth Warner.
Warner.
Motion's been made, seconded for Betty Warner. Betty, if you could stand up, be so recognized. Are there any other nominations for Lister for three years?
All nominations be closed when the secretary has one single ballot.
Someone want to second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded, that the nomination be closed when the secretary has one ballot for Betty Warner. All in favor? Aye. So voted. Okay, next, we have another Lister. There's a miss print in the town report, it's actually for two years, we will affirm the designation. So we have a nomination for Lister for two years. Betty? Nomination's been made for Jeremy Ringer.
How about it?
Seconded by Erica Hurd. Jeremy, there I am. If you stand up, you're recognized. Are there any other nominations for Lister for two years?
Move that the nominations be closed and a single ballot be cast for Jeremy Lister.
Motion's been made, seconded, that the ballots be closed when the secretary has one ballot for Jeremy Ringer. All in favor, say aye. Next is auditor for three years, and Rebecca Stewart's term is up.
I nominate Rebecca Stewart.
Second.
Motion's been made for Rebecca Stewart. Rebecca, if you could stand up and be recognized, please. Thank you.
Move that nominations be closed and a ballot be cast for Rebecca Stewart.
Someone want to second that? Motion's been made, seconded, that the secretary has one ballot for Rebecca Stewart. All in favor, say aye. Trustee, the public...
Point of order, I'm sorry. So friendly point of order, there were two resignations from the auditors, so we actually have all three auditor positions that we have to elect.
so we actually have all three auditor positions that we have to elect tonight.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
Um, and Amanda Barrett, with, um, one is for one year and one is for two years. So, we will do the one-year position first, I guess.
Okay, so we need auditor for a one-year position. Does someone want to make a nomination? Sue?
Uh, Sue Orville, I nominate Martha Firestore.
Nomination's been made, seconded for Martha Firestore. Seconded, yep. Martha, would you want to stand up and be recognized? Thank you. Any other nominations for auditor for one year?
Make a motion that the nominations be closed and one ballot be cast.
Someone want to second that? Seconded, someone tell you, I ask you, is, uh, motion's been made, seconded that the secretary has passed one ballot for Martha Firestore. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next one, we... Need a, uh, auditor for two years.
Two years.
Are there any nominations? I can't hear you. Have there any nominations for auditor for two years? Somebody must be willing to do this. Nomination's been made for Charlie, someone want to second that? Seconded by Martha. Anyone want to stand up and be recognized? Are there any nominations for auditor for two years? Someone, a motion that the secretary has passed one ballot. Terry, someone want to second that? Seconded by Sarah. All those in favor of Charlie Bezo for auditor for two years, say aye.
Aye.
Hey, trust, next is trustee of public funds for three years. Henry, uh, Henry Hutchkes' term is up, and we need a nomination for trustee of public funds. Do we have any nominations?
We nominate Henry Hutchkes.
Motion's been made, seconded for Henry Hutchkes. Henry, want to make that be recognized? I'm trying to hear, oh, there he is. Are there any other nominations for trustee of public funds?
All nominations be closed, and the secretary has passed one ballot.
Someone want to second that? Seconded by Terry. All those in favor of Henry Hutchkes, say aye.
Aye.
Trustee of Roger Clark Memorial Library for three years, Erica Heard's term is up. Are there any nominations for trustee of the Roger Clark Memorial Library? Uh, I'm sorry, I have too much to talk about.
I nominate Erica Heard.
Motion's been made, seconded for Erica Heard. Erica, stand up and be recognized. Are there any other nominations for trustee of Roger Clark Memorial Library? Here none, all those in favor of Erica, say aye.
Aye.
Second constable for two years, does Manoli's term is up? Are there any nominations for second constable?
I nominate Manoli.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded for Dr. Manoli. Are there any, I know he's not here. Are there any other nominations?
Oh.
Here none, all those in favor of Dr. Manoli, say aye.
Aye.
Grand juror for one year, Sandy Leekens' term is up. Is there any nominations for Grand Juror for one year? Motion's been made for Sandy Leekens, seconded by Erica Heard. Are there any other nominations? Here none, all those in favor of Sandy Leekens, Grand Juror, say aye.
Aye.
Town agent for one year, Sarah Gray's term is up. Is there any nominations for town agent for one year?
We nominate Sarah Gray for Elizabeth Warner.
Hi, me, you want?
Did you nominate Sarah, is that what you said?
I was nominating you, Sarah.
No, not.
What was the town meeting do?
You're sure it's a process?
Yes.
I nominate E.J.
I second the nomination.
Were the motions been made, seconded for E.J. Rubin? E.J., stand up, see if you can do it. Are there any other nominations for the nominations?
Move that the nominations be closed.
All those in favor of E.J. Rubin, say aye.
Aye.
Next is cemetery commissioner for three years. Mike Terry, George Dunlon, his term is up, so we need a nomination for cemetery commissioner for three years. Do we hear any nominations? Terry, nominate yours, Dunlon.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded for Wirth's truly. Are there any other nominations? Here none, all those in favor of that choice, say aye. Next is cemetery commissioner for, for three years. Mary Lee Stevens' term is up. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Mary Lee.
Motion's been made, seconded for Mary Lee Stevens. Mary Lee, stand up. No, stand up, stand up. I'm sorry. Are there any other nominations for cemetery commissioner for three years? Here none, all those in favor of Mary Lee Stevens, say aye.
Aye.
Collector of delinquent taxes for one year, Janice Stumpf's term is up. Are there any nominations here?
I nominate Janice Stumpf, I second.
Motion's been made, seconded for Janice Stumpf, for tax collector. Uh, she's not here, is she?
No, she's not there.
All those, uh, are there any other nominations? Here none, all those in favor of Janice Stumpf, say aye.
Aye.
Town clerk for three years, Trisha Fryer's term is up. Are there any nominations for town clerk?
I nominate Trisha Fryer.
Second.
A motion's been made, seconded for Trisha Fryer for town clerk for three years. Trish, stand up and be recognized. Are there any other nominations for town clerk? Here none?
She pulled out this, this afternoon at four o'clock.
She pulled out?
Yep.
Any other nominations?
I move that the nominations be closed.
Here none, all those in favor of Trisha Fryer, say aye.
Aye.
Town clerk? Uh, town treasurer, I'm sorry. Town, town treasurer for three years, Trisha Fryer's term is up. We need a nomination for...
I nominate Trisha Fryer.
Motion's been made, seconded for Trisha Fryer? Boy, that's a good question. For three years for town treasurer. Are there any other nominations? Here none, all those in favor of Trish Fryer, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Trish, for serving us. Fire chief for two years, Dave Colton's term is up. Are there any nominations for fire chief for two years? I nominate Dave Colton. Motion's been made, seconded for Dave Colton? Dave's up, so he's here, he's recognized. Are there any other nominations for fire chief for two years? Here none, all those in favor of Dave Colton, say aye. This is, uh, in many years, Dave's been serving as fire chief, and he needs to be so recognized. Article five, will the voters of Pittsfield authorize all current taxes to be paid to the treasurer unless otherwise noted? We need a motion to accept this article. Someone, so we can second it. Is there any discussion? This is more or less the housekeeping article that's in here every year. Any questions or concerns? Make a motion, motion that we approve this article. Someone want to second it? Erica? All those in favor of accepting article five, say aye. Article six, will the voters of Pittsfield authorize the treasurer to collect taxes on real property in two installments, on or before the third Thursday of August and the third Thursday of November, by physical delivery to the tax collector before five P.M.? We need a motion to accept this article.
Motion to accept.
And seconded by Jen, is there any discussion? Here none? Someone want to make motion that we accept this? All those in favor of accepting article six, say aye.
Aye.
Article seven, will the voters of Pittsfield authorize twenty thousand dollars to be placed in the reserve fund for the highway, uh, for highway equipment? Someone want to make a motion to accept?
Make a motion that we accept.
Seconded by Terry. Is there any discussion?
Is there anything specific or just general?
I don't know if it's really specific, but, uh, the international is, you know, twenty-three years old and it's in pretty rough shape, and actually, uh, Dave and I went and looked at a used cam truck yesterday that we're quite interested in, and we actually have money in their equipment fund right now to purchase that, even though we're all in the tree that we're in, and Dave is here. But now the other truck's been having to replace in over two or three years, so it'd be nice to build that up, so have that in the fund. Any other questions? Marsha?
Just, what's the effect on the taxes?
Terry?
Do we have, like, the effect on the taxes?
So, if you go into the budget, um, summary sheet, it's... Uh, it's on page twenty-four, it shows the percentages for each.
Yeah, on page twenty-four, it shows all the percentages?
All the way over to the right-hand column on the bottom. Yep.
Any other questions? Comment? Make a motion we vote for not, or...
In favor of the article?
In favor of the article. Someone want to second that?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Article eight, will the voters of Pittsfield authorize four thousand dollars to be placed in a reserve, reserve fund for the S.C.B.A. equipment, self-deprecating half-rates? Someone want to make a motion to accept this article? Tim, someone want to second that? Dave? Is there any discussion?
I'm only a little four thousand.
Someone want to make that?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Article nine, will the voters of Pittsfield authorize two thousand five hundred dollars to be placed in a reserve fund for a fire truck? Someone want to make a motion to accept this article? Seconded by Sue. Is there any discussion? Mike?
We just got finished paying two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a fire truck, considering it's not funny, for in five or six or ten years, we're gonna get up to a hundred big bill.
I'll ask, maybe somebody from the officers from the fire department could address that?
No, we actually, last year, they put, right now, in the, in the, you know, the town leaders for the contingency, uh, the select board reduced it to twenty-five hundred because of the tax rate went up this year, and they're trying to save, try to level out the taxes, I guess.
I'll, I'll actually correct that. It wasn't that the tax rate went up. The select board, the select board, um, has a lot of things to go and weigh, and one of the things we have to weigh is, this is capital planning money, um, and we put five thousand dollars aside last year. This year, on April fifteenth, we had the flooding, and the, the town had to spend down the reserve fund that we had, um, to do the emergency and, um, emergency and access repairs to the roads that got flooded out. So, the town doesn't have the money to, you know, a capital plan is something you want to do and to put in place to move incrementally towards being able to do purchases that you see coming down, down the road in two years, five years, ten years. Um, and the select board, because the, the reserve was spent down so drastically, the select board felt we don't have the money to put forward in, in capital funds like we want to, so, but we, we know the importance of capital planning, we just felt we had to reduce the amount of monies that were being asked for because of the, the fact that we have to rebuild the reserve fund. We have, there are a whole bunch of things that have to be rebuilt, and, and, you know, we managed to, the last two years, we managed to offset the tax rate with undesignated funds. We did that this year the best we could, and still did not manage to get to where we were gonna be, but to offset the, the school taxes. So, they're hard decisions to make, but they're decisions the select board, that's why you elect the select board, is to, to put forth honest, true facts about what's going on with the finances of the town. We floated a one million dollar note. Now, we didn't spend close to that doing the road repairs, but there's still, at this point, three hundred and twenty-some-odd thousand dollars outstanding in that note that we did spend, and the Upper Michigan road repair is probably gonna be another two hundred thousand dollars. We don't have those FEMA funds back yet, so that's money that the town owes and that we're on the hook for, and until we get some of the FEMA stuff pushed forward and start getting some of the monies back and in place, the board felt that it was not prudent to, to go so high on some of these capital planning numbers, and that's what we had to do. Um, and, you know, I, the board can speak too, the rest of the board members can speak as well, but they're very hard decisions to make, and they're things we have to be cognizant of, and we don't have the reserve fund. of, and we don't have the reserve fund, you know, to deal with another April fifteenth flooding, so we have to build that back up incrementally and move that along, and one of the ways we do that is by not putting so much into the things that we're building up for the future.
Patty, any other questions?
No, I think we'll be authorized twenty-five hundred eighty-five to the town hall committee.
Someone second that, Terry? Although in favor or, uh, stopping Article nine, say aye. Article ten, will the voters of Pittsfield authorize thirty thousand dollars for phase one of the town hall repairs as recommended by the town hall committee? Does someone want to make a nomination that we accept this article? Erv? Seconded by, uh, Terry? Is there any discussion, and actually on page, I think it's six and seven of your town report, uh, this is reported committee on the town hall, um, does anybody have any questions and hopefully somebody from the town hall committee can answer them. So?
Um, I know that your survey that was done was online and, uh, on paper, I wondered what the results of the survey were.
Yes, we did, uh, we did an online survey and then we also set up a distribution point for, uh, paper copies, and, um, we posted the survey results, uh, when we tabulated all of the, uh, all of the results, and you can find that on, uh, the town hall website. We, this report that's in, uh, the town meeting is a condensed version of the full report that the town hall committee submitted to the select board in December, um, that report as well goes into some of the, um, findings of the survey, and I can, I can give you a few of the, a few of the findings. A broad range of residents submitted ideas for options, more than a third of respondents lived in the town more than twenty-six years, residents and taxpayers overwhelmingly believe the building is an historical treasure and an important asset, more than sixty-seven percent of respondents, um, said that, residents and taxpayers want to use the building for town meeting, but nearly sixty percent also want to see concerts and the bazaar, followed by exercise classes and private functions at town hall, residents and taxpayers favor a multi-year approach for funding and scheduling, repairing, renovating the building, more than a third of respondents said they would pay a hundred dollars additional tax dollars to fund these projects, followed by seventeen percent who said fifty dollars, residents and taxpayers overwhelmingly do not want to replace town hall with a new building, that was nearly seventy percent of respondents.
Any other, Terry?
Yeah, how many pages do you anticipate? This is page one, three more pages.
So, I, I'm not speaking for the, for the committee, but they did put forward to the select board a three-phase approach, um, I know that when the article was drawn up last year, that I believe people wanted to know, um, you know, what the options were and what the, what the process was, I, um, you know, my, my only, I don't want to say it's a misgiving, my only, um, question on this is, it seems like this has moved towards one of those options, where I, I feel the options are, are things that, you know, the town should be aware of, um, and the voters should vote on, and, and I know the select board recommended the, the, um, the allocation of the money, but I, I also am curious as to, this isn't the full amount for the first phase, so, when, and I maybe ask the committee when they think that first phase will take place, does, does there more funds have to be put aside for that, or?
Well, I, uh, first, I, you know, I think the charge to the committee for town meeting last year was to investigate, research any and all options for the future of town hall, and the, uh, town hall committee, uh, broke into two, two phases to, uh, to satisfy that charge, and one was to come up with the, uh, scope of work that needed to be done to, one, open up and reopen the building and then, uh, secure its maintenance and, and upgrades for, over an extended period of time, and two, we were charged with going out into the community to find out what the community wanted to do with the building, if it was worth investing money, um, and, and if so, what did you want to use it for? The recommendations that the town hall committee came up with was, one, to proceed with this phase one of a multi-year capital improvement plan, uh, to reopen the building as soon as possible, and that is what is before the voters tonight. The second recommendation is that over the next year, uh, we recommended that the select board develop a plan to implement future phases of work the committee, the committee identified to maintain and renovate town hall and identify alternate financing to pay for maintenance and upgrades. So, these other multi-year, uh, plans are part of the, uh, plans that we presented to the select board. The third recommendation that the committee made was to request the select board examine and correct any insurance or town policies that impede public use of town hall, establish a management entity to promote and manage community use of town hall, and appoint a citizens group to identify future kitchen and interior furnishing upgrades and get cost estimates.
Anybody got a feel for how much this, you're going to fill out for one guy?
The committee, and I, can I just take this moment to recognize the members of the town hall committee, because we worked for the, the whole year, we met, you know, at least twice, uh, twice a, a month, and I would just ask, uh, you know, to recognize Ray Colton, Carl Odle, Dave Larkin, Jeremy Rayner, Glenn Renauer, Betty Warner, Sarah Gallagher, and Keith Hopkins.
Alfred, just stand up.
So, this was a very broad, uh, coalition, I, I think, that we had gathered, and we had a lot of building expertise, we had design expertise, construction, even construction of historical buildings, um, that helped us put together a scope of work, we looked at the building, what it needed, what we needed to do, what kind of projects we needed to do to, A, get it open as soon as possible, we focused on the first floor substructure, um, we even, uh, and that's what this project would fund, uh, that's what this article would fund, the first project, so that would include, uh, the design and installation of steel beams to strengthen the first floor structure, which would also then necessitate demolishing the basement's drop ceiling, rewiring basement lighting fixtures, and excavating around the south wall to waterproof the foundation, and re-grading around the front steps to address basement flooding. The committee put its heads together, we talked to experts, uh, in the field, and we feel that this phase one can be accomplished with forty thousand, uh, for forty thousand dollars, that was the estimates that we came up with. We also employed a structural engineer and an architect through Preservation Trust, uh, both will, are well-versed in dealing with historic buildings. Their inspection reports we just received, and they basically, um, support the priorities that we have set for the projects to reopen the building. In his report, Bob Neld from Engineering Ventures states that a public meeting room floor has to support a hundred pounds per square foot live load per Vermont code, Bob's assessment of the current log joists capacity of the floor as it stands, as fifty pounds per square foot, and he says the wood beam that supports the thirty-five foot span in the floor system is substantially overstressed, that's why our priority at this point project is to, is to replace the floor system, or at least structurally support it. Tom Key, who is the architect from Preservation Trust, lists water mitigation of the town hall basement as the number one project of high priority, and that's the other, uh, part of the project. The, um, the other future phases that we, that the committee identified go into roof repairs, uh, beam repairs, uh, replace angle truss braces, standing seam metal roof when the, uh, current asphalt roofing, uh, has, has lived its, its full life. And also, we identified insulating and reciding exterior walls, these kinds of projects, we put price tags on it, these are today's dollars, um, you know, it's really up for the, uh, select board, or if the, the select board decides it wants to name a building committee, let's say, then that's for that committee to.
Yeah, what price tag on page two?
Yeah, well, we have, we have, uh, we've identified, so we have roof repairs A, which includes beam repairs and then installing a standing seam metal roof, uh, we estimate that around twenty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, uh, or roof repairs B, which is to replace the entire stress system, which includes, um, a new ceiling, new lighting fixtures, remove the old roof, and install the standing steam, uh, metal, standing seam metal roof, and that we, uh, anticipate, estimated at fifty-two thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. The cost of insulating and reciding exterior walls, we looked at, we projected eighteen thousand.
Any other questions, companies? Kwan?
You said there's one here, the next person, phase one, with forty thousand, but they're passing it to thirty.
Yes, we have ten thousand in the, that the town meeting has, uh,
Oh, so that's.
Has already appropriated in the previous town meeting. We are hoping.
Dave, any questions?
My name's David Clark, and, uh, I got a, uh, the engineer report, uh, and it's referred to, unfortunately, I think those numbers are a lot hotter than we were talking, so I don't think that the money that we're talking, or having talking in the committee is going to be enough to do that stage one. What are we going to do to get more money? Is there going to be grants, if, you know, I know maybe we're eligible for grants, but it's not going to happen without, like, double the money, stage one, appears we were way underestimated on that steelizing, now, he did propose other, uh, like, structural repair that maybe we can do for the, to get the building built, but it isn't going to be steel beams, I do not believe, from what his estimates were.
Well, I can let other members of the committee address that. So, when we came up with estimates, we were basing it, uh, on using, uh, local contractors. We also, uh, were utilizing donated design work, and most of the estimates, from what I can see on the, two estimates, are using contractors that have a historical background, and as Tom says in his report, you're going to pay more money if you utilize those kinds of contractors. So, these are decisions that, uh, the building committee or the select board will have to make.
Ellie?
Dave's doing it, but we're not over a hundred and fifty-five yet, and that's today's price, and it's not done, and it's not going to be done to get the price to, uh, early enough, so what if, uh, a lot, so much?
Charlie, you want to comment?
So, I think, I'm hearing that the phases are, are spread out over a bunch of time and there's a, from what Mr. Larkin said, there may be a more significant expense. You know, looking back at the, at the, at the, um, at the minutes from last year, so, it sort of is form an exploratory committee to research any and all future options for the Pittsfield Town Hall and have those options presented prior to the next town meeting. I'm wondering, my question is, did the, did the committee agree with this, like, was this a unanimous agreement in this report and, and has everybody in the committee seen the report and is, and what are their feelings? I, I, um, I know at the meeting, the whole committee was not at the meeting when they came and, and we got our report on the, on the report.
When Ryan and I were on this committee, and I'd say, when we got together, we all agreed, just finally what we've come up with, a couple points I'd like to bring out, it's really happened to us so far, is we looked at our other options, it was shocking what it's going to cost to rebuild this, I mean, put a whole new facility, it was in the neighborhood three to four times what we're talking about repairs for this. The other option we looked at is, why don't we tear this place down and just, you know, pave it over or put grass in it? I tell you, that's what's going to cause, it's almost going to cost the same amount of money just to repair this thing. So, that's where it was like, okay, it's like, what are we doing with this? Every, every option we looked at was going to cost a lot of money, and you can't just let it fall down on its own. Um, that was not one of the things we examined, but as a, as a group, we did agree that this is the right way, plus when we look at the survey, overwhelmingly in the town, they did want to have this facility repaired, so what we're trying to do is do a phase approach and start this, get it up so we can start using it. If we're, if, there's enough people using this facility, maybe there will be more enthusiasts to say, yeah, maybe we should really do a lot of it, make this thing a beautiful facility, or should just keep it down where it is and locate the way they're now, that can change with time as you start to use this facility. You take a look at what was done in the library, I mean, the library is just getting a lot of use now, I'm sure when the people look back on years ago, they weren't sure it would be used that way, and that's kind of what we're looking at, how do we get this thing back in use? And so, this is the beginning period. Now, I also saw, this other report came through on, on the estimates, I thought those estimates that this other person came up with were outrageous, and I've, I've been in this field, so I mean, I just, I was shocked at it, but I think what we need to do is get going on this thing, get the basic building so it doesn't fall down on its own, the water that's coming into that is just undermining everything going on in that facility, that whole, um, flooring system is not going to improve over time if we don't do something with it, and so, I think by doing this, we can get ourselves moving on. In another couple of years, will we be asking for more money like through the insulation? The answer is yes, should we want to use it, because you're wasting money right now with, with eating that facility, so yeah, you're going to want to do something with it. The roof that we talked about, and we put multiple options together with roofing, because when you do a roof, you have options. So, as a middle of every, if you own a house, you know you're going to have to replace the roof after so many years, and that's what we got there, we have an asphalt roof, they don't last forever, and so that's why we're looking at maybe ten years from now before that roofing piece gets done. The basic structure up there is, you know, it'll hold up, but it's not great, but then, you know, the reason why we had two options on roofing was, if you're going to want to spend, I don't remember the number, thirty thousand dollars to put standing seam up, should you spend extra money to go ahead and replace all raptors at the same time? Because why, you know, put something up without fixing what's fundamentally underneath it, then you know- it? Then you know it'll last for another hundred years. That's where we were looking at the different options. And we're not ready to make final decisions yet. That's someplace in the future, but we want to look at everything as to what we do for this facility over the next 10 years or so. But yes, the roof was the highest.
Terry?
Does it make sense to table us for a short-term type of hits or miss? Do you get a handle on what the cost is going to be?
Any other?
So wait, is it over four years or 10 years?
I think it's going to be always 10 years. Maybe 10 years for this whole...
So like $170,000 over 10 years, not over like three or four years?
Well, the dollar figure that's before the group tonight is $30,000. And that's for phase one, to get the building open. So in subsequent years, we put together a project plan and a schedule, set priorities, get prices, investigate grants. Preservation Trust has grant money available in at least three different programs that I've been able, and we are continuing to talk about. And that would be part, our committee's recommendation is that any grant money be included in proposals for going to town meeting and asking for money. So that we investigate a broad range of proposals to utilize, maximize tax dollars for these projects.
Terry?
For phase one, we're going to go through a formal...
Thank you, everybody, Jerry. I got the floor.
I think you said Jerry, not Terry.
Sounds alike.
Mr. for going this way. All I got to say is this committee worked on the job. I got to watch my language. They're regarded as they do, and regarded as they don't. And I would just like to thank you for your efforts.
Charlie?
So I have just a two-part question. So you mentioned the historic contractors. Is the building in the historic registry? Is it a building that requires this historic preservation type of contractors, number one? And number two, I'm confused because of what Mr. Larkin said. Do we know how much the first phase is going to cost, or do we not know how much the first phase is going to cost?
We have estimates that the committee has put together, utilizing expertise in design and construction and engineering, and utilizing design work that's donated and local contractors who have put prices on these, that have done this work. We have estimated for the water mitigation, excavating the south wall breaches, we put that at $1,000. If you look at the estimates that the architect put for water mitigation, he's talking about $5,000 to $6,000 just for an excavator. And he is utilizing our excavation engineers that they had utilized in other historical projects. We, as far as we know right now, we are not under any requirements to utilize those kinds of historical contractors.
Right. So the building is not like in a registry or anything, is a historic building?
No, no. We're not in the list.
I did. So I haven't seen the new report that has the new numbers. I'm just wondering, what is the difference between our original estimate and the new engineering? I mean, I'm sure there are, the historic people are more expensive, however, you know, how far off are we in our estimate? I think it's a valid question, and is $30,000 plus the 10 that we have really enough for this first phase?
Since we just received these reports, so we haven't even been able to, you know, present it to the full committee, but go ahead, Glenn.
I think, you know, your only point is you've got to really know what's going to cost for all these events.
Exactly.
And, you know, we haven't been able to look forward if that's what's going to take.
So the question is, man, if we don't have, if what we have is $40,000 and the bids more, is that going to put the project off? What is it? Or is that going to be a decision that the board will have to deal with and all that?
Or do we look at something like Terry was saying, maybe putting it off, getting the bids, and coming back at a special town meeting with an actual number to authorize more money? You know, that's a possibility.
I would think if the majority of us in the survey said we want the town hall, we ought to put $30,000 in the account to start funding the town hall. And that sets our tax rate for next year. If we have a special meeting and have to come back, and the tax rate changes all of the stuff, I think we should just vote on it tonight and be done with it. I'd like to do whatever I can with whatever skill we find for...
Motion to make, seconded, at the... Take a vote, huh? Article 10, whether to accept the ballot or not, I'll read it one more time. Will the voters of Pittsfield authorize $30,000 for phase one of the town hall repairs as recommended by the town hall committee? Pardon me? Article 10. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Article 11. Will the voters of Pittsfield approve the proposed budget to meet the expenses and liabilities of the town? Someone want to make a motion, we accept this article?
Motion that we accept.
The made, seconded. Are there any discussions? And I believe the budget starts on 16, 24, 26. Are there any questions or concerns on the proposed budget? Motion to make, or who to accept, seconded by Brian. All those in favor, stay aye.
Aye.
Post. Article 12. Shall the voters of Pittsfield prohibit the town constables from exercising any law enforcement authority in accordance with 24 DSA 1936? Someone want to make a motion, we accept this article? So moved by Erica, seconded by Charlie. Is there any discussion?
Why, why is that?
Tim, do you mind if I answer? So I'll answer only because I have prior law enforcement experience. The constables right now do not enforce criminal statutes. They enforce civil statutes and civil laws that the town has. They will do service, they will do dog complaints and things like that. In order to be, in order to serve criminal statute authority, they have to go to the police academy. And Joyce, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the town has always voted that they didn't want to make the expense of sending the constables to the academy because that would make them police officers and not first constables. They would be considered constables, but there'd be a significant amount of expense to, number one, send them to the academy. Number two, they would have to be outfitted with a thing, with things like a police cruiser or a vehicle and things like that. The town did not want the liability of dealing with that.
Any other questions? Make a motion, move.
Motion closed.
Pardon me?
Motion closed.
Motion that someone on second half? All those in favor accepting Article 12, say aye.
Aye.
Article 13. Will the voters of Pittsfield authorize a court to buy and sell real estate? Again, this is just a healthkeeping article. Someone on second half? Same as I Terry. Any discussion? There are none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 14. Discuss any other non-binding business which may partially come before this meeting. Someone make a motion, we accept this article? One second. Before we continue, Representative Cindy Hosted will attend their meeting, because she's not here this year, and she's not going to run this year, but we have two candidates here, like the Vice President, Wayne Townsend, and Kirk White. Thank you guys for coming. Thank you for having us. Any other non-binding business anybody would like to bring before this meeting?
I don't know. Here's a question. What time is the meeting for next year?
So...
Someone that has to take 45 days, you know, with COVID, so they have to get to there. And it's 6 o'clock tonight, so...
There was a reason for that.
Well, I know that, but that doesn't help me, so I'm at it now. I always suppose we have a pretty good turnout for a 6 o'clock meeting.
We have a very good turnout.
And compared to what's kind of our game, which is the middle of the day, when we visit, so I just like to have a big discussion of all timing and what we can do as a town moving forward.
So the select board, the one thing the select board can do is assign the time for town meeting. We are not an Australian ballot town, so we do have to meet on town meeting day. There is a provision in place that we could, we could meet on the Friday or Saturday prior to town meeting day, but that has to be put forth a year in advance on the morning. And also, the voting, because we're not an Australian ballot town, would have to still be on town meeting day. So the only thing the select board can do is assign the time, not the date. We changed the date today to today because of a conflict, which was learned about at something called the town meeting tune-up. And...
Can we assign the time? So can you... That's the big step.
The time is assigned. We've changed, we changed the time to 6:00 PM on town meeting day. It was just this year, we...
For this one?
No, we changed the time, we changed the time period to 6:00 PM. We did that because we got a petition that was signed by 88 people. More people signed the petition and showed up at town meeting last year. So that's why we're here. Once the select board voted to change it to 6:00 PM, it's 6:00 PM until voted by the select board that it's not. And I don't see any reason for it to be revoted because the turnout here is fantastic.
First, well, next primary election year.
Yeah, the next, there will have to be something done.
It's going to be, it's going to be primary election.
Primary.
The other, Chris?
I think we should thank the church for hosting this, this is for tonight and perhaps future meetings as well.
Absolutely.
Bruce? George? I just want to say that when we talk about the town hall over there, if we'd been here 189 years ago having a town meeting, that building stood right here. And that building started out as our church, and then it was moved up the way, and then it was moved across the way.
You don't move it?
You?
No. Caleb's great-grandfather moved it.
Cool.
So what are you saying, you're going to move the church?
No, 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 no. I'm just saying that that building is steeped in quite a history over there.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other non-breaking?
I think it might be nice for accessibility, because that hard-earned people will be some microphones next year, so that the audience can hear. I think it's a big privilege for accommodations for deaf and hard-earned people to have some microphones, so that folks on the audience have their voice heard, as well as being near a...
I'm sorry?
So delinquent taxes, that seems to be going up every year, you know? What's the procedure for getting the delinquent taxes paid? What is your...
Janice Dunk would be the one to answer that, and unfortunately, she's not here tonight.
I mean, the delinquent tax, whether it takes that to sell property, the taxes of the rent, that is a process.
It is, yes.
Any other non-breaking business, I mean, on Terry?
We had a funny winner, and I'd like to say I thank the town, all the people who are here for this event.
Charlie?
On that same note, I would like to thank, I'd like to thank the road commissioner, the town clerk treasurer, the assistant town clerk treasurer, and Patty Haskins for all the work they did to help us get through the FEMA incident and FEMA stuff that we had to get through this year. I know that took up a lot of time and changed a lot of things. On April 15th, George and Trish's work exponentially grew on that day, and they stepped up and absolutely are responsible for the fact that this town got that dealt with in such a timely, quick manner. I don't know if many of you know it, but Pittsfield was the very first town in the state to have its declaration in place for funds and for, to be declared a disaster area after that event. And that happened hours after that office opened in the morning. So thank you both of you.
Doesn't necessarily mean we're going to get a refund. Anything else? Jeff?
When is the next tax appraisal to be appraisal?
Listeners? We'd like to see it done for the grand bus year 2022. We're just going out asking for bids now, so we wouldn't see anybody come here, ask or anything until next, or the numbers for events for next year. It's been, oh, we have years since the last one, and so we're, you know, this thing that we're building at this point. Does that answer the question?
Anything else?
Move for adjournment.
Seconded, adjournment. Be careful walking outside, it's starting to rain, and the deposit bills in the box are going to shingle outside. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for coming down.